Back for video? All right. So it is seven o'clock and I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is our second meeting for January, January sixteenth, twenty eighteen. And I'd like to invite all of you as our first order of business to join me in pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So, welcome everyone. We have some students with us this evening from Mount Westonka, so welcome, nice of you to join us. I'm going to start out by making a few introductions. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor, and to my right, we have our city administrator, Mike Barone. We have our city finance director, Brian Grimm. Community development director is David Abel. And next to him, we have our, from Kennedy and Graven, Andrew Biggerstaff is sitting in for a normal attorney, regular attorney, Ron Beatty. And welcome Andrew again. And then rejoining us once again after his absence last time, for a very good reason, is our chief of police, Paul Falls. And congratulations, chief, on your new arrival of your first granddaughter. So, and a cute one she is. So, congratulations. Nice to have you back, but a good excuse to be gone. Then, to my left, we have council members, Pam Mortenson, Patricia Thole, Mike Molitor, Shannon Bruce. And on the end, we have our city engineer, Paul Hornby with WSB. And our city clerk is Chris Lindquist. Gary Peters is our superintendent, Public Works superintendent. And then we also have Cassandra Tabor with us this evening, HR. And, okay, that's the old title. Now I have to remember the new title. HR Communications Coordinator, I'll remember the new title next time. So with that, is there a motion to approve the agenda, or are there any changes or additions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Bruce and seconded by Ms. Mortenson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five oh. We don't have any special presentations this evening, and we don't have anybody signed up under persons to be heard, so we will move on to consent agenda items. Are there any that you wish to remove? Okay, we have consent agenda item A, which is approval of a regular meeting minutes from January second, twenty eighteen. B is resolution number ten eighteen approving claims. C is a resolution number eleven dash eighteen approving continued support of we can through CDB Cheek funding. And D is a resolution twelve eighteen approve our step increase, approve a step increase for Brandon White, police officer. E is a resolution thirteen dash eighteen approve a parking sign change at Tuxedo Boat Lounge. F is a resolution fourteen dash eighteen to approve the twenty eighteen standard specifications and detail plates for, that's an engineering issue. And G is a resolution fifteen dash eighteen to approve the actuarial service consulting agreement for twenty seventeen, which is the GASP number forty-three and GASP number forty-five. And H is a resolution sixteen dash eighteen to approve the WCA wetland replacement or whackout, wetland replacement plan application for Sunny Field Edition Two. Any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A through H?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Thole and seconded by Ms. Mortenson to approve consent agenda items A through H. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five oh. Next is our public hearings, which we have none, so we'll move on to our business items. First, it's our capital improvement project discussion, and I believe that would be Mr. Hornby and Mr. Peters.
Correct. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. In your packet is a memo that identifies the twenty eighteen, twenty twenty-two street capital improvements program that's been a cooperative effort between Public Works and Engineering. The packet includes the council memo, and then also a letter that summarizes the proposed capital improvement plan. If you recall, council requested that one of the first meetings of twenty eighteen, with the budget was set aside for the street, street road fund, that we bring back a draft capital improvement plan for council to discuss. And this is also one of the last remaining items to, to, that would go into the pavement management plan that was prepared with the, with the revised pavement readings that the council had a presentation by engineering staff, I believe that was in December?
No, it's early, it was fall, October, November.
Andrea and Shu from WSB. I also included in the packet the data from the pavement management plan that indicates the proposed projects by segment and the treatment. And then also, there's some notes to the right in that spreadsheet that just provides some of the things to keep in mind when they'll have to look at with these roadways. One of the things I do want to point out, for instance, if you look at the spreadsheet, data spreadsheet in twenty nineteen, there's a number of roadways that in the pavement management plan, the treatment was identified as a seal coat. And working with Public Works and looking at each of those segments, their ratings were in the eighties, which typically indicates they need some patching work. And what we're proposing from a Public Works standpoint is primarily, these are patched areas that need to occur around manholes and catch basins, is to have Public Works as part of the routine maintenance the year before the, for instance, the seal coat, they would go through and do milling around those areas, patch those, so they blend in nice, and then seal coat them the following year. And we're proposing that that be done. So what ends up happening is that patching actually will help increase that rating, and what it would do is postpone the point to where you would need a millon overlay. So I think it was a good suggestion by Public Works. And so as noted in a couple of places in here, we also took a look at, in twenty twenty-one, Public Works has also identified that there's a water main that has had a number of breaks in it. And we're looking at Morningview Drive, Westwood Avenue, and Westwood Drive as being a reclaim project rather than a reconstruct project, but doing that in conjunction with the lining of that water main. What we'd end up doing at the water main is replace it with an internal liner, that's a structural liner. And then, in that process, you'd have to have temporary water for residents, essentially run a water main above ground, and then connect water lines to the spigots and homes. And has a temporary condition until the water main is lined back in service. So I think it's a good application to do that without a lot of expense, for the expense of reconstructing those roads.
Paul, on the, on the water main, if you're lining it, you wouldn't have to dig up the road though to line it, that's all done?
That's one of the benefits to it, you would not have to dig up the road. You would have a couple of places where you're going to do some cut-ins, you would have to dig it up, so it'd be a couple of patches, much like we did for the extension of that water main from the south, south water system to the central water system, the points where you had deflections. In this case, you would do it if you can't pull through a valve, but with today's technology, I think we can accomplish that by robotics inside the main. So, yeah, I think it's a good alternative than digging up with the cost of the main With that, I guess I would ask if council has any questions, or if you want to have any other discussion on what's proposed, or have any changes to what has been proposed. I think if you look at the years, we've come close to the dollar amounts of a budget to create here. This should be kept in mind that this would be a fluid plan, and we should review this every year. If we do have excess dollars in one year, we should look at pushing it to the next and seeing what projects we can pull forward to use those dollars. And there was one, there was one year where, you know, we were talking with finance, I think in twenty twenty-two, I took one street that I think Public Works would like to be a, have on the list, and I just threw it in twenty twenty-two, but it kicked us over the budget by about seventy-five thousand dollars, so I kicked it out to twenty twenty-three. But it's still one on our list that we'll have to monitor and see if that can get kicked in. We don't want it to fall below a rating of fifty, and it's got a high enough rating with, twenty twenty-three should be fine.
Yeah. I guess to piggyback on that, or I don't know if, Paul, you were going to mention our gearing, but obviously, the twenty eighteen would be probably the biggest focus, as Mr. Hornby mentioned, now each future year is a little more fluid, but I think, especially looking at twenty eighteen, whether, you know, you'd start to look at getting some of those bid packages out, or in the spring, or whatever, you'd want to be pretty set on what you're looking at doing in twenty eighteen, probably sometime in the first quarter here, I guess, or?
Well, sooner than later.
Yeah, sooner, yeah.
Yeah.
And one of the things we also, and Brian, thanks for mentioning that, we'd like to do is, and recommend that be done, is get a coring crew out on the roads that are identified in the first three years for millon overlay, and do some tubular sampling to make sure that the pavement is, holds together for milling.
For millon overlay, yeah.
Is that recommended for the ones for eighteen as well, or are those already?
For eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, I would suggest we come back with a proposal for a coring of those roadways, and then, once the results, that's back, we get going on design.
Can they do the coring in the winter? Because if we're looking at millon overlay for twenty eighteen, how does that fit in?
Well, the answer I'll tell you is yes.
Okay.
My staff doesn't like it because it's cold and it's problematic. Well, it ends up happening, you're drilling, you generate heat.
Right.
And the cores freeze in the equipment, so they have to prime out. And it's not the most desirable time to do it, but can we do it? Yes, I've done it before in the winter.
Because we have hardscrabble, millon overlay, and we'd want to do some, especially on hardscrabble.
Yes.
Where it's been patched significantly.
When, from engineering staff and Public Works staff, and look at that road, we had identified that without the pavement management specialist review of it, is a potential reclaim project, and that's what we're targeting that one for. But once it was rated, it came back as a millon overlay.
So, Mr. Hornby, on the, on hardscrabble, that, the shoulders, there, I mean, it's just like, there isn't any shoulder, it's just like eroded away. So how do we, I mean, without taking too much time, just on hardscrabble, how do we even approach that straight road?
I think, there's two things that have occurred, I think we had one area that was problematic, that Public Works did a nice job of, where we had a resident, also add rock on one side of it to help try to alleviate some of that erosion. There is one on, it's up against a nature preserve that?
There is all nature preserve out there, that's the other thing, that's a big factor against us, there's not a lot of shoulder to begin with out there, so be very careful what you do in there.
But there is at least one, the one area, as you come in, go into the circle to the right, so going down the hill, I would expect, that would be one we'll have to look at what the restrictions are on that nature area, but preferably, we look at putting some kind of a rock soil in there with energy dissipation, check dams, or something like that, to try to slow that water down till it flattens out and flow out of there more in a sheet condition.
Yeah, well, if there's, I don't know how many bicyclists there are that live in that area, but I'd hate to fall off the road on, yeah.
We've had at least one meeting out there to talk with residents, and that, we were looking, standing right in that location.
Yeah. Question for you, Mr. Hornby, we have, so also in twenty eighteen, City Hall parking lot, and there's no dollar amount.
Yeah, so that's one of the projects that's on Public Works list.
Okay.
But it doesn't come out of the pavement management.
Okay, that's what I was going to get at. Same with, well, number seven access drive, and then the Slow Creek Park Trail.
Correct.
So those would come out of different funds.
Correct.
All right. Because the three fifty-seven, I was wondering if that included it or not, but apparently not, okay.
Correct. Yeah, it does not.
Those would be budgeted in the, yeah, the city hall parking lots in the capital improvement fund, the general improvements, the well seven would come out of the water fund, and the Slow Creek Park would come out of?
Park fund, okay, good. I just, um?
But I think just for economies of scale, you did those, obviously, at the same time.
Obviously, right. Do we have any, we should have maybe just had some estimate costs in there as well, just so we kind of know.
It's in, it's on page three, I don't know, in the notes?
I'm looking at forty-five, okay. Oh, yes, you're right. It's in the notes. Yes, right, not in the spreadsheet, yeah, yeah.
Right, it's this?
Yeah, okay.
So, I have one question on the, on the millon overlay, such as hardscrabble, obviously that's a big part of it. If we come back with the core samplings, and they say, and it's determined that we can't do millon overlay, what's our backup plan for millon overlay then?
We look at our twenty nineteen projects and see if we can pull it forward. That's why I would like to go through the first three years, at least the first three years of a capital improvement plan and core those roadways to determine that we can take those roads, other roads for another year and pull them forward, and then rebudget the following years with hardscrabble as a different application.
Right.
And so that application might be a?
Reclaim.
A reclaim, a reclamation, okay.
Unless you want to reconstruct it.
No.
I don't think that would fall into a reclaim.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, Ms. Bruce?
So, we're, we're essentially going from a budget of three hundred and fifty thousand to eight hundred thousand over the course of four years, and that's roughly a thirty-five to forty percent increase every single year. Where is that money coming from? It's coming from the tax levy, isn't it?
Pretty much, yeah, correct, that's where.
So we're going to have to raise significant taxes to cover these projects, and I question raising anything, thirty-six percent, thirty-five to forty percent annually, without, I struggle with that. That, this is a huge increase. And especially when we've been told by WSB, when they assess our roads, that I think it was ninety percent of our roads are in good to excellent condition already, we only have ten percent of our roads that are in poor condition. Why are we increasing our road budget thirty-six percent every single year?
No.
It just doesn't?
It's not quite thirty every year.
It's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars every year.
Right.
And that's an extraordinary amount of money, and I'm sure there's nothing that WSB would like more than for council just to blanketly approve this, but I've got some serious questions about the amount of money that we're approving here. And also, I understand the twenty eighteen budget is passed, and this money is spent. I didn't vote for that budget, and this is partly why, but I do not want to go on record saying that in twenty nineteen, we're approving this amount of budget for this, for roads, and in twenty twenty, six hundred thousand dollars, and in twenty twenty-two, eight hundred thousand dollars. I think this is just out of order and just off the charts.
I don't think it's out of order, I think that anything is worth discussing, or just discussing it right now, we're not voting on it, we voted on the budget for last year. And I don't think that, that WSB is looking for us to just blanketly approve this, it's, we're in a council meeting, we're looking at the pavement management program for the next, well, two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-two, so we've got the information in front of us for which to have an informed discussion.
So, does anyone else have any concerns about the amount that we're spending?
Mayor, perhaps some history should be?
Yeah, I was just going to do that. So, first of all, back in twenty eleven, previous council that was then in place, they decided to create a road, a road?
Committee.
Committee. And they looked at the needs in the city, the entire needs of the city, and they, they did a plan that we've heard about, and we've seen, and so on. And then, what they said is, because of our needs, we need to start raising funds every year. And they said, in order to achieve the needs and to be able to do the preventative maintenance, which is critical, and in order to also address the roads that are basically crumbling, to do all of that, we need to raise around nine hundred thousand dollars a year. However, they felt, which I think was a good rationale, we don't want to just all of a sudden have nine hundred thousand, because our needs are such that we could spend nine hundred thousand a year and, and basically not even get caught up. So they said, let's do a hundred thousand the first year, a hundred thousand, then add an additional hundred. So they, they made a recommendation as to how much should be added to the levy specifically for road improvements and road maintenance.
Can I just make one modification? I think the road committee, if they would have had their way, was going to go zero to nine hundred, like, zero to sixty, zero, you know? But it wasn't feasible, I think one city staff said after the recommendation, it's like, the only way it's even possible to start to get there is to phase it in over time, because there wasn't going to be the levy capacity, or appetite, or?
Right.
Or whatever. So that's where the phase, yeah, obviously, you know, trying to do the a hundred, you know, I think at first it was even fifty or seventy-five, a hundred, and over time as, you know?
Right. And so, and then, I think in the latter years, they had even recommended as much as the chart shows, even like a hundred and fifty thousand additional funds. Having said that, what we do, and what we should be doing every year, is looking at the needs, as Paul, Mr. Hornby was saying, is we need to look at this chart every year and determine what we're going to be spending and how much we're going to be spending. When you look at this list here, though, it's lengthy, it's very lengthy, and we have to do, a lot of this preventative maintenance has been left undone, and because of that, now we're actually paying more than we would need to. So we do need to look at the preventative, we need to look at the millon overlay, because once you do the millon overlay, that gives you more life to the road as well, before you have to reconstruct. So, and then also, Mr. Hornby worked with our Public Works superintendent to make sure that everything was correct, and I think Mr. Peters made some recommendations, too. This isn't just coming from our engineering firm, they worked in conjunction with our Public Works department, who knows our roads very intimately, if you will.
Could I respond to that?
Sure.
The fact that our roads have been assessed and ninety percent are in good to excellent condition tells me that we've been doing something right in the past, and we haven't been spending this much money in the past. So how did we get to a point where our roads are in ninety, they're ninety percent in good to excellent condition, and we haven't spent money like this in the past? Why is this all of a sudden urgent that we increase funding when we're not putting in that many new roads, and our roads are comparably to other cities? I think we're doing pretty well with our roads.
We are putting in new roads. We are taking on new roads.
We're not putting in thirty-six percent more new roads every year.
I think the new developments that have gone in have really contributed to the new roads, and of course, those people think their roads are great, because the brand-new roads and the new developments, we go in the first, you know, each year.
That's not in this budget.
Yes, it is.
We pay for the, whatever we do the next year, you know, year two and year three, because we're trying to keep them up.
The developer puts in the roads when the, when the development goes in.
Initially, but we do the upkeep.
Right.
So, yes and no. For instance, some of the roads that the city received, if you will, from developments, they put in an initial amount for seal coating, but then, like, three to five years after you do the initial seal coating, you have to do another one. So if you look at this, yes, the initial one is maybe covered by the development fees, but then, three to five years later, that's not, and we're taking on those roads.
And I'm not saying that we shouldn't put more money in the road budget, I'm just saying thirty-six, this amount, a hundred and twenty-five thousand every year, increasing it is too much.
And I guess, yeah, and I agree with you that when I look at these numbers and trying to fit these into a balanced budget, it's a challenge. So as far as, but we've done, or some years we haven't done the full hundred and twenty-five, we've done something less, or whatever, and each year, that's why, I guess, the way I make myself a little less concerned, is that I know where, you know, the three fifty's what we've got worked into this year's, you know, budget that we approved, but in twenty nineteen, when that comes around, if we have to hold at three fifty and we can't go to four seventy-five, there's nothing that precludes us from, from doing that. I mean, this is our goal and our long-range plan, you know, at least outlined by the road committee and previous councils, you know, as such, but there's nothing that says that each of those years, we have to do these items. Each year's the annual budgeting process, and you five get to decide that, or whatever, so that's where.
But this is a good, this is a good snapshot, if you will, to let us know what the needs in the city are. So, I mean, if they, if we didn't have this, we wouldn't know what the needs are. Then, the second step is to determine how we can fit the needs within the budget. So that's, so this year, the budget was established for the twenty eighteen roads, so we have that three seventy-four, three seventy-five budget, that's already been, or three fifty-seven, I'm sorry, that's already been determined. The next year, we're going to look at this and say, as Brian was saying, we may need another Public Works worker versus more road. I mean, we have to, we have to look at everything. So we're going to have to look at the total needs, and this may, there may be some things that come off.
Yeah, because in twenty nineteen, maybe the Eagle Nest and Pond View doesn't happen, or maybe there's, you know, there's certain things you just have to pull out and peel back, or, so that's, I guess, the way I make my?
I just, I know how these things work, and once a number is identified, it tends to come back again in the future, and then it's said that, oh, well, council approved this in the past, and then it's, it's as if it were approved. So I just want to go on record saying, I don't want that to happen in the future, I don't want it to come back to say, in twenty nineteen, council approved four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the road budget.
I understand, sure. Mr. Hornby, you wanted to say something?
Perhaps just a couple of items. Number one is that engineering staff and your staff follows council direction, and that's what we've done of preparing the pavement management plan, and the budget recommendations came from the road committee, which the council approved. So we're just following the council directions, this isn't WSB saying, you should spend this money. The other thing is, on the ratings on the roadway, even though it says good condition, a rating fifty to ninety is in a millon overlay category, you've got a number of roadways that are rated in the fifties, that if you let them slide for very long, they're going to be in the monitor situation, which means they're going to be reclaimed or reconstructed. Those are the roads we target first in this pavement management plan with the budget available. If you go through and look through the data, there's about three pages of roadways that fall in that category.
Right.
So I think it's a little bit of a reach stain, and ninety percent of the roadways are in great condition, because that's not necessarily true.
That's not what I said.
If you, if you drive through and look at hardscrabble, that roadway's rated in the fifties. If you drive and look at it, I would say that roadway probably is not, in my opinion, a one, not an expert on the pavement management, like that group that did the pavement management plan. When they go through and rate that and analyze the data, it then comes back as a millon overlay. Once we go through and core that, it might, we may have to push that back a couple of years, because it could be a reclaim project. So those kind, those are the kind of things that we have to do with pavement. When they're reviewing these roadways and reviewing by the surface, when, I'm taking a look at them with Public Works, we have a little bit more history of what went on with that roadway in the past. Will that be a millon overlay? If the cores come back and they're solid, I would say that's millon overlay, it's certainly a preventative maintenance item that does a great job of improving the roadway surface and buys you a lifetime out of that roadway, along with similar roadways.
Mr. Peters, you want to?
Yeah, if I could be, just a few things, Mayor. This is our third year of doing this, and the plan has changed every year. I mean, we look at this in depth, we look at what the funds are available, what's coming through, and we made adapt, we adapted, we changed, we made stuff fit. We have some general numbers to work with, and that's what we need to work with. A pavement management program for us is in its infant stage. Other cities I've worked for have had them in place for many, many years, and they're past this stage, where they're now playing the upkeep game. We're so lagging behind in a lot of these roads, they're still playing catch-up, and that's the expensive part. And, and like Paul said, if you let these roads that are on that border go a little bit, and also now you're down below, now your eight hundred thousand just turned into one point two million, or whatever it is down the road. A true pavement management program, and I remember this when this was presented, because Mark Erickson was the engineer at that time for WSB, it was nine hundred thousand dollars in the first year. The second year, I think, was one point three or one point four million that was recommended. The following year was like one point eight million was recommended. The numbers are, were astronomical, because the roads were in that kind of condition. A pavement management program doesn't work unless you do the blend of everything and make it work, combining everything, taking care of the, roads are in good condition, keeping them there, and also picking and choosing some of the bad ones and stepping them up. That's what we're trying to do, we do that every year. We've changed this, we've worked in this. Paul and I sat down. Um, Paul and I sat down, I don't know how many times, we rewrote this thing, trying to make things fit and change. Will it change again next year? I'll bet, I'll, I'll bet everything that's gonna change again. The two thousand nineteen will probably be changed from this to some different to make things fit again. We have to do that. But in order for this pavement management plan to work, it has to, A, be, give us some recommendations, some funding, numbers to work with first off, and see if we can fit it in. And then, you know, keep going with it. If we're not going to fund a program, then I'll just tell you right now, if you wanna, you know, if, if it's scrapped, then don't do anything to the roads and let them go, because you're gonna be rebuilding them in a few years, and you're really gonna be paying the money. To me, the pavement management program works. I mean, if you look around other cities, and the bigger cities, Mounds doing it, they've redone all their roads out on the island, it's, it's a constant battle. Every city goes through it, but, but we're in an infant stage. And having infants, the most expensive part to begin with, and it's just, it's gonna get better. But right now, it's, the most expensive part is playing the catch-up game, because stuff hasn't done.
I don't think anyone is, is advocating abandoning the pavement management plan. I certainly am not doing that. I think we need it. We need to look at roads that need the work. I'm questioning the costs, and I've said my piece on that, so.
Okay. Um, and just kind of for clarification, we don't have ninety percent of our roads that are ninety percent or better. I, I just, I just wanna clarify that. M- most of our roads are, are fifty percent or less. So, is that a fair statement, Mr. Hornby?
I think that, in looking at ratings and, and the pavement management plan, I was just looking at that as we're having this discussion, is that, uh, and I think what Councilman Bruce was referring to is in the data that's provided in the pavement management plan, uh, the ten percent of the roadways were in what they call a fair or poor category. And those are rated zero to fifty.
So?
So, when you have roadways, six, almost sixty percent of your roadways are in a good category, those are ratings from fifty to ninety, which is a very wide range. The roadways that are in that category are identified for mill and overlay as the main pre- preventative maintenance treatment.
Okay.
Yeah, above that, you're looking at seal code. And what, working with Gary, we've, uh, looked at some work we can do on the public works side that can gain us some rating and move some roadways that were identified in the pavement management plan as mill and overlay to a seal code, which is a less costly preventative maintenance item, uh, to help reduce costs, not increase cost. So, uh, we've been working with staff, um, in public works and engineering, we, um, move these around and try to get the best bang for the buck with the budget that was set by the road committee and approved by council.
Right, and every year we'll go over that. Okay. So with that.
I have some additional questions.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, so one of the candidates for mill and overlay for this coming year is Eagle Nest Drive. Is that correct?
Correct.
Um, and if I'm reading the, the data correctly, and it's got a, a PCI of like eighty-six or seven, what, I mean.
What's not on there is this is just a short, a short stretch of road that we're doing. We have a section in the middle of, basically, it's between Turtle Creek Boulevard and Turtle Creek Road is where the Eagle Nest runs. In the center, there's about, I'd say about a hundred and seventy-five to two-hundred feet around a, um, that is settled, around a manhole area. And it's very uneven, there's a big, big wave in the road, water sits in there. We tried patching it, it just has not worked. So our solution would be to mill that short area in there. We're not doing the whole road, it'd just be about, probably, I think it's a hundred and ninety feet is what we came up with. That way we would be milling and overlaying in there to get the crown back in the road, around this low sunken area, to get the road back up. Then we're, you know, so it's not the whole road, it's just, that's just a, a, a portion of it that's getting done.
All right, then that explains why we would take also, tackle something with the whole CI as it is. Now, so, th- thanks. Um, but i- if we've got a sunken condition or settling condition, usually that, you have to tear everything out and rebuild the base. Are we sure, or no, no way's gonna fix that?
The rest of the road is fine. Um, what it is, is run a manhole, so I'm assuming it was when it was put in, the compaction was not there, you're gonna get that, we have that in a lot of areas. You look at catch base and stuff like that, they're always put in afterwards. You get a lot of settlement later in, in, throughout the years. We just did a whole bunch of them in North and South Saunders, that's what we worked on all summer, doing that around there. Same type thing, you, you know, you know, mill it all, patch it, and bring it out in cars.
Kinda dig out the, a small area that fixes settling, and then.
Yeah, and, and it's kinda designed that way. I mean, Paul, can you probably attest to this too? I mean, when the roads are set up that way, to get the crown back in the road on summers, it just, it happens, you know, and I, who, who knows why that certain area settled, decided some else.
Right.
You know, it was a Monday or a Friday, they wanted to get others to compact it as well. But I mean, it's, it just, you know, but as I say, it's just a short stretch that we're doing.
Okay.
You know, we have a lot of neighborhoods that are that way, so.
But in the, in the notes on the right also indicates that we, I have identified a three-hundred-foot section as a mill and overlay for Eagle Nest. And if you look at twenty nineteen, we have it scheduled in the seal code, so that we can seal code all of Eagle Nest instead of, you know, reclaiming a portion or doing that kind of.
Right. And then on the items that are identified for the seal code, um, it looks like a lot of those, we're seeing ratings in the um, eighty-seven, eighty-eight range that were identified as, in the maintenance items as beyond being seal-coated and are in the mill, mill and overlay. So, are we, I guess, it's, question is, I, when I first looked at it, I wouldn't even consider them for seal code, I thought they were already to the point of the mill and overlay. So we've got enough confidence that we can kind of bring these back off of life support and, and become, that we're not throwing away money with the seal code.
There's a few bad areas near, like you say, it was same thing with, we do with North and South Saunders. A lot of the areas that are bringing their rating down around the manholes, you have the, the road, the, the manhole stays put, the road heaves and settles. See, that's where you get your cracking and crumbling around them. So what we did in, uh, North and South Saunders, we milled that all out, milled down, redid all the pavement around there, got everything back up, got our, um, crown back in the road, uh, repaired a few curbs that were bad. I have very good confidence, looking at that road last summer, that we have no problem doing what we did there, same thing here. Getting that, getting it done that way, saving the money, and seal coating everything.
Okay.
And, uh, yeah, trying to save the road. I mean, to me, to mill and overlay, it, yeah, it'd be a great thing to do. But of course, watching the numbers, watching the funding, I think we can, we'll be money ahead doing this, and try to prolong that life of that road a little bit.
Do you guys use any, you know, I see we've got probably in, in eighteen about a, what I'd say eighty-twenty split between mill and overlay and seal code. Is that just coincidence, or is it, you kind of have a target of, we wanna do this much mill and overlay and this much seal code?
I think in the, in reviewing these, um, in some years, when we first was looking at it, we used up the entire budget with proposed mill and overlay, that, oh, you will gotta keep doing some seal coating too. So we looked at what roads we could push out. We also heard council talk about, can't we look at, kind of keeping some of the roadway work that we are doing in neighborhoods and areas, and try to, you know, balance the treatment, doing some seal code every year, doing some mill and overlay every year, and trying to combine them to meet the budget and also, uh, reduce the area impact, you know, to keep it in the general area. So, it was kind of a, it's kind of a puzzle to put all that together and try to balance that, and so, um, you know, some of the year, some of the years, we have fewer roadways to seal code and more to, um, mill and overlay, and um, and we also have some developments that were thrown in there to get done during certain years, I think, starting in twenty nineteen. So it was a, it's a bit of a balancing act to do that. I think it was also a good suggestion to try to help that budget um, by having public works do some of the patching, identify that on some of those roads that were rated in the eighties, to bring them up to a level where we have confidence the seal code is a good treatment.
Okay.
I, I want a final comment, I just wanna make, it's not a, anything specific, but I think even with, with looking at a um, a, a good chunk of the roads being, you know, some of them are, are good, but even to the extent that you've got, let's just use a ninety-ten as an example, where ninety percent are good, ten percent are bad, I think it's just illustrative of how much that ten percent can toss just to keep that fit. I mean, these numbers basically not really support just the ten percent, but just that ten percent of the road is so expensive. I mean, we look at what we did at Tuxedo Road, that's eight-hundred thousand dollars to reclaim one, two miles of road in a city that's thirty-two square miles. It doesn't take much percentage-wise to drive these kind of numbers. Even ten percent of roads, actually, would, if we addressed all ten percent of them, our budget numbers would be a lot bigger than what they are. So, I think, in, in, just looking at this and saying, oh, it's, you know, ten percent of them, it's not that bad, it's just the problem is those ten percent are really, really expensive to deal with. And so, I, it, to some of the concerns, I think that's, that's part of what we're looking at, is it's just sheer fact of how expensive this can be. So, that was all.
Yeah, and most of these, when you look at them, right now, they're mill and overlay, and they're not reclamation or reconstruction projects. I mean, some, but very few. So if we can stay in that category, we're gonna save a whole lot more money as well.
At least I can make a note. I just really appreciate our engineering staff for providing this information. This is exactly what we had asked them to do, and this is really a good roadmap, no pun intended. Um, so that if we have extra money, we can shuffle things around. If we don't have any money, we push it back. I think this is great, and I really appreciate the effort, and, 'cause I know it's a long process to put this together. And Gary, you as well, thank you.
Yeah, good job. And again, this is long-term planning, which is what we need, um, so we can look at it, um, ahead. But can, can change from year to year, and it very well might, so. All right, so, do you need, um, would you like approval of?
If, uh, if council doesn't have any modifications to what, um, public works and engineering staff has put together as a proposed five-year capital improvement plan, uh, we'll bring this back, uh, with a resolution approving that, unless you prefer to do that just by council's permission.
I guess, one thought I had is, I mean, would we wanna, I mean, I think you, there'll be a proposal coming back to core some of these in the first few years, and that could change the plan a little bit before you bring it back for adoption, I guess, correct?
Well, I think, I think the issue is, one, here's how I see it. We would want to approve the twenty-eighteen projects. We would wanna also approve, um, the coring project, and then the coring project would come back, and if that should change, then we may have to make some alterations. But, I mean, obviously, the coring project has to happen first, but I wanna make sure that we also get this approved, so it doesn't hold up any engineering, whatever timeframe that we're dealing with.
But I think that council as well as staff, the goal here is to not have somebody reclaim, reclaiming pavement in November. Um, so, the idea would be to try to get those projects done sooner than later, and I know the council's, um, also has that timeline in mind. Um, last year was unfortunate, and then we had something interrupt that project. But, in this case, um, this, the, the reason to bring this on was the council wanted to be able to see it, have some discussion on it, so I did not provide a resolution to approve it. I thought that would come back at another date. Um, I can also bring back a proposal for the coring in the first three years, and then, once the coring is done, if we have to reshuffle them, we'll go back and amend this.
Okay. 'Cause I also know that we have kind of a window of opportunity for bidding.
Yep, and Mayor Council, I think the other reason was that we wanted to be able to set the twenty-nineteen budget kind of on our timeline and not have to, to wait for coring or whatever it is. Um, and then have to change the budget. Um, generally, we start a budget in July. Yeah, ideal, I think, would be able to have the coring done and have some sort of cost estimates for the projects that are on your list for the next three years, based on that coring, and be able to work our way forward through our normal budget process, so.
But I, I think we'd still have time to get the coring and make final decisions in twenty-eighteen, 'cause from what I think I've talked with Paul and Gary before, I mean, the mill and overlay bidding process is intense, as intensive as a reconstruction, so if we're still out bidding in, I don't know, April, May, June, we'll be fine. I mean, as far as, it's a much smaller scale project than.
June. I don't like that word. No June.
Last, last year, mill and overlay went out early, I mean, we had that done already, and out, and bid out by, was it March or April, we had it out. We had great numbers.
I like that.
I see this again, and it'll happen again that way, I think, as long as everything comes out well, I think we can. I like to get it done faster too, so.
One of the conversations I did have with another city, um, earlier today was, um, there also is some benefit to doing this, you know, between June and August, between the, beginning of June and end of August for construction, because then school's out, so you don't have school bus issues and busting up.
That, the construction part, that's fine. I don't want the bidding in June. The bidding needs to be done before then, because of, yeah, okay. So, um, what, do you need a resolution for the coring? Or you're gonna bring that back?
We'd have to bring back.
We'll bring that back in February.
You'll bring it back, all right. So we'll, we'll take another look at that then. Um, maybe in our first meeting in February, is that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So next, um, we have a, a conditional offer of employment for Ryan Farniak, and that is Ms. Tabor.
So, exactly, so we have a request to accept conditional offer of employment for Ryan Farniak as our CSO officer. Um, and presenting this on behalf of our personnel committee. Um, as you recall, we are looking for a safety service officer. Do you, do you make consider public safety staff? We've been working on this for quite some time, I wanna say over the last year. Um, so a variety of times we're put out, we've done an interview process and just had a call to be looking for. So, in this process, um, the position closed on December eighth, we ended up with twelve applicants. We did have eight applicants that we invited for a panel interview. Um, one did not show for that interview, and one canceled at the last minute. So, um, throughout that pro- process, Ryan Farniak emerged as our candidate for higher above the other candidates, and I would say by um, a good step. So he has three years of CSO experience, which is about three times as much as we've seen to date while we're interviewing. Uh, two years of reserve officer experience, he was a reserve officer the year in twenty fifteen. Field training officer for reserves, and then he has his BMR certification as well. So, obviously, this would be pending background checks. Create plans for everything that's needed for him. Um, and for those of you who aren't familiar with Ryan, Ryan has been on the city before as well. He, he was in a CSO position with us, um, blacked it for Susan Schooling, did that, and then got two years of experience um, in some surrounding areas. But I'm open to any questions, should I have?
Any questions from the council? Okay. Um, then we are looking for, um, resolution number eighteen dash eighteen to approve, um, eh, seventeen dash eighteen to approve the conditional offer of employment to Ryan Farniak for the CSO position. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Bruce and seconded by Mr. Maliter. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five-oh. And next, I'm Mr. Brony. We have a pay equity.
Uh, yes, uh, Madam Mayor and Council, I would just like to, um, talk a little bit about this item. It's, it's not a very difficult item, um, that we do, um, we do it every three years. But it, it takes a little bit of understanding. So in nineteen eighty-four, the state of Minnesota created the Local Government Pay Equity Act. Um, the intention of that legislation back in that day was to correct the historic gender bias that you see in wages and paid female employees at that time. And they modified the reporting requirements over the years from every year for a number of years, uh, 'cause I remember doing it every year when I was at Eden Prairie, um, to every two years, and now it's evolved into an every-three-year thing. So a year, a third of the cities in the state have to do this every year. Um, so this is our year to do it. Last time we did, we reported on data from twenty-fourteen. Our deadline is January of the following year, which was January fifteenth. So we are back with data through, uh, December of last year for January thirty-first of this year. Um, in your packet, I have the information, uh, that was generated by the, uh, which is called the compliance report. The compliance report, um, just basically takes all the job data, which are job classifications by title, and the salary ranges for the grade level, not the employee. And you plug that into, um, the data grid that you do online, and it spits out your compliance report. Um, that report, plus a resolution that you will hopefully approve tonight, and then some information about our total payroll for twenty-seventeen is included and shipped off to M and B for their review. Their review typically takes a number of months, as you can imagine, they're doing probably two to three hundred cities, um, in the state of Minnesota each year to review. Uh, they'll let us know if we are in compliance or not. Uh, they may want some expl- explanations on some things, and in fact, last time, we had to do some explaining on why our job hierarchy of titles and ranges changed enough from the time before, which would be the twenty-eleven timeline, twenty-twelve timeline. Um, and that may be the case again this year. We've had a number of modifications in our, our, um, job title hierarchy from the last time. A couple of examples, uh, Mr. Peters was hired here as a public works supervisor, is now a public works supervisor. A couple of examples, uh, Mr. Peters was hired here as a public works supervisor, is now a public works superintendent. We used to not have a drug task force employee, now we do. Uh, we used to not have a police lieutenant, because that position was eliminated before the last one, and we brought that back, things of that nature. And they're gonna wanna wonder, they, they wonder why, what happened, so you have to provide a small explanation. Last time I had to provide that explanation, I believe in June, and then we heard our, uh, that we were in compliance in July, August, or something like that, didn't take much more time. So, uh, I may send them ahead of time, uh, here's our changes and see if we can speed them up, but we'll see what happens. So we've traditionally, at the City of Minnetrista, been in compliance, um, we have a very sound pay structure, and, um, I don't anticipate any issues with that going forward for this particular year, so. With that, I'm looking for, um, a recommendation from the council to approve the resolution to submit our pay equity. I'll take our resolution for tonight and that payroll data plus the reports that you see in the packet and submit that to M and B by the thirty-first of this month. And I'll stand for any questions if you have any.
Any questions? Well, hopefully we pass.
I really hope so, I'm a knock on Wednesday regardless.
All right.
Very confident.
So I'm looking for a, uh, motion approving the resolution for the City of Minnetrista for the pay equity compliance report. So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Thole and seconded by Ms. Mortenson. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So next, we'll move on to, uh, staff reports, Mr. Barone.
Um, uh, in addition to myself, uh, Director of Administration, uh, Tabor is going to give a couple of things, so, um, I have three items. Uh, first one is, uh, as you recall, we, um, approved the installation of a panic button by USA Security that is supposed to take place this Thursday. So they should be here to install that. A reminder to the council, on February fifth, our next meeting, we actually will have three meetings. It will be the annual E D A meeting at six thirty that night, so we'll have our work session at five thirty, our E D A meeting at six thirty. Should last about ten, fifteen minutes, and then our regular meeting at seven. And then, just an update, um, we're still in the labor negotiation process, we held a session with each of our bargaining units last week. So, uh, Mr. Grimm, Ms. Tabor and I met with the public works, uh, representatives on Wednesday, the police officers on Thursday, and the police supervisors on Friday. We made progress on all, we did make enough progress, so you see a, uh, a contract for approval tonight, but we hope to keep cranking forward on that and hopefully get those done relatively soon. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Tabor, she has a couple of items, and one's a, a demo, so.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll touch briefly to, we're in the process of hiring a position for public works and maintenance worker positions, I just wanted to give an update. We have posted that originally mid-December, uh, with it closing towards the end of the year. We didn't receive the application document we hoped for, we also moved extension, um, received two additional applications, we're sitting to post things right now. So we did extend that through the twenty-second, just a little bit of an odd date, but it gives them an additional weekend, as people are seeing that posted. We're hoping to see a few others come in, and then from there, we'll do an interview process, and we'll just see where we're at with what we have, so, just a follow-up on that. And then, um, David, it's not kindly called, uh, one of the communications initiatives that we had for this year was to launch a summary, for lack of a better word, of the council meeting. So people who aren't able to attend, residents who aren't able to attend, maybe are wanting to sit through, maybe to, maybe out there, have the option to subscribe for this, just like we do subscriptions for everything else on our website. And what this does is it gives them an overview of the action that was taken, so it really isn't, it isn't anything like our minutes, so there, there aren't any discussion points, a lot of that, we're really just looking at doing actions. So you'll see, this is from January second, so interviewed planning and parks commission applicants, and so what we've done with this is, as they move through, there's some hot links. So for example, parks commission, so if David clicks on that, depending on what your, um, security setting is, it'll take them either right to the spot on the website that will tell them what's happening in Memorial, Parks Commission's people, if you go to approved open book meeting for Wednesday, this took them to, um, the actual item that was impacted. So it just gives them really quick ways to get access to the information for motions and, uh, resolutions that were passed. You scroll down just a little bit farther, we'll do upcoming updates, or upcoming events, so that'll take them to the calendar, if we click on that. Okay, so as people get more and more familiar with our new website too, this will help with some of that navigation. Um, and then if you look to your right-hand side, contact your council, that gives them a direct email as well. What's nice about this?
It was covered, yeah, it was.
It was a covered, yeah, so what's really nice about this is, for example, if we, we click on Mayor Weyler, and it would populate a box, and so it would say, uh, Mayor Weyler's address, but then the, um, subject line is pre-filled in, so it lets you know that it's a council corner email, so that it came from that box. So you have an idea of where maybe they're sourcing their question or their key background, which I think is nice. Um, then we've got our Facebook, Twitter, it takes them right to our website, and you can, you see our logo, it's gonna take them directly to our website as well. So this is something that's fully adjustable, so if you have a lot going on in a meeting, it can get longer, and a little less than I, I'm worried, so we're, we keep that a little bit more organized. So, the goal is just to be really effective, efficient and effective with the way that we're getting some more information out for our residents.
And if you see, there's a YouTube link, so if you actually do want to watch the meeting, click on that. And then, just as a side, uh, Ms. Tabor and I met with our newest reporter from The Laker.
Megan Smith.
Megan Smith is her name.
Editor, right, editor, or?
Editor.
Yeah.
She probably wrote in the whole paper.
Yeah, yeah, I, I bet, I bet.
So what we found out though is, so one of the questions I asked her is, are you coming to our meetings? Because, you know, they've been kind of few and far between the meetings they've attended. And she said, no, not yet, because I've got twice as many cities as I'm supposed to have, because there's still...
She's got nine cities.
Yeah, she's got nine cities, and she, they're staffing one other person, they're trying to staff one other person, that would take four of them, or five, and she'd get the other four. So she's gonna be watching them on TV, so hi, Megan, but, uh, see if she's watching. But, you know, maybe we'll have her back someday, but we're gonna, um, send her a press release and hopefully get a little publicity on our new council's corner option that's gonna be on our website. And we hope to send that off and get it in the paper this Friday, and she's said she'd be happy to do that. Our experience has been, if you write a good enough press release, they just print it, they don't have time to edit it, so, they're understaffed, obviously, so.
And then for advertising, I say like chew, that's a good point, uh, we'll do the same thing we do anytime we've added anything to our list of subscriptions. It'll go on the news alert section of the website, Facebook, um, Twitter.
Check this out.
There's something new out there if you want to have that, you can, they can manage their subscriptions, but yet for a couple of months, they then decide, it's not, it'll be fantastic.
And anybody can sign up for Facebook and Twitter, even students.
So we showed you this one, this is kind of, I guess, old news since we're having the next meeting after that. We'll still post this one on the website, but the new one, I think Cassandra said she's gonna try to get it out within five or six business days, so it's, it may not be an immediate turnaround, but maybe as we get, pick up speed here, it might get a little quicker, but again, it's gonna depend on content, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
How much we have.
That's gonna be the big piece, is if we're wanting to connect people to, for example, with the designations, um, what was proposed as designations, some of those changed, so maybe you work with Chris to get updated P D S, so they can attach it to. Just depend on what the content is as to how quickly we can turn them around, but that's not my goal, is in five or six days to get that turned back around. And then hopefully then, we'll set the same expectation that we do with YouTube, that the following Friday, that's available to people, so they're just adding into your routine, but you can expect us to get to it.
Well, Ms. Tabor, to your credit, um, it's the, there were the public works position and one other one that you extended the application period, right? Um, and because you suspected that it might have been during the holiday season, that not a lot of people will apply for jobs during the holiday season. So you did go ahead with that extension, it sounded, it did, uh, result in receiving some additional applications or resumes, so.
Yeah, absolutely, hopefully we'll see more of that.
Yeah.
Thoughts, questions, I'm open for any sort of feedback.
I'd just say, good job, I'm, I'm pleased to see council, um, links there, that you can send an email to council, I think that's gonna be really helpful.
Yeah, just another way for them to quickly find out, feeling like they're digging through a website, even ours is very efficient.
Oh, this is great, absolutely great, like it. All right, okay, are there any other staff reports?
I don't think so.
Nothing, okay.
The only thing about a mayor, um, well, we can do that in February, we're not having a planning commission meeting, but just be thinking about who would like to attend the February, uh, planning commission meeting. Just, I don't need to know now, but.
Okay, think about it, and that would be the twenty-sixth, I believe.
Yep, yep.
So, and also just an announcement, um, state of this, um, should I, I'll just announce it, um, so, um, the state of the, their next, our second, our second state of the city address is, uh, February twenty-seventh, which is a Tuesday evening. It'll be here, and, uh, so come and join us and, and find out all the good things that are happening in Minnetrista. And so we'll move on to council reports, and, um, I'll just briefly, um, I attended the Regional Council of Mayors, um, meeting on January eighth, and a number of good speakers, one of them, uh, was, uh, Tom Fisher, who is Director of Metropolitan Design Center and Land Use, and it was all about autonomous, uh, vehicles and how it's going to change our, our world, basically. And I won't go into details, but it was very interesting, um, somewhat, um, I think, I, I think he had a little different perspective on it than I think a lot of us do today. But I don't think it's gonna happen quite as fast as he thinks, but they're coming, they absolutely are coming, so, um, autonomous vehicles, and most of them are gonna be electric as well. Then I also attended the Northwest League where, um, Aline Chernoff is, uh, who is the new Chair of the Met Council, was our guest speaker. Um, good to meet her and get to know her and talk about, uh, Met Council issues, and that's all I have to report. I know we've had some Personnel Committee meetings, and we're gonna meet again, uh, to work on the, um, union contracts and so on, so that'll be coming back to you as well.
Uh, W C C meeting has been canceled for this month, so that's it.
Okay.
As the mayor mentioned, I participated in the Personnel meeting, and we'll have one more to report back on that yet to be scheduled.
Uh, on the L M C D side, um, wrapped up fundraising efforts for the year, um, two thousand seventeen. Uh, in conjunction with that, we did our K A S harvesting, uh, we got a lot of feedback about that and desires to expand it. However, budget constraints are kind of holding us back, so, um, those, that's why I tried to bring those two things together. Same thing with the sheriff activity, uh, we haven't decided if we're soliciting grants this year, grant requests rather. But that will probably be a request to have additional funding for the sheriff patrol as well. So, I think there'll be some additional, um, requests coming up as a L M C D regarding wake zone, no wake zones, um, as well as some other doc issues as well, so.
And no meetings here to, to report, but I did have a question about the fire hydrant testing in Hunter's Crest, and just wanted to get a status on where we were on that, if that was...
Uh, Mayor and Council, I don't have a status on that, I apologize, so we'll hopefully get something to you, so.
Okay.
Okay, um, with that concludes our reports. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.